And this meeting was recommended by Ms. Peacock Hodge to discuss the Director of Schools. And so it's basically, we're kind of, normally we sit down here, but we did it in this fashion because we know there's probably going to be some people coming to fill up the room. So we were doing it in this, a work session in this format today up here. So, broken chairs aside.
Not anymore. I'm good as gold.
So, we have three candidates. It's on the screen.
It's on the screen.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I got it. We have three candidates we interviewed last week, Dr. Cornelius, Dr. Crabtree, and Mr. Hargrove, and that is going to be our selection. We're going to vote on that at the special call meeting, time of five o'clock. And so that's basically the only thing that's on the agenda for that meeting. So here we have some open discussion. And Ms. Peacock Hodge, you're the one that wanted this meeting, so you can lead off.
I thought you'd be leading, but okay, here we are. It just seems crazy to me to not discuss something, aside from one very controversial topic. I don't know that there's ever been anything we haven't discussed. And so it's hard for me to wrap my mind around us not talking about these interviews. And I've never hired a Director of Schools before, maybe this is not how you do things. But I value all of your input, and I also value it being put out there for the public to see so that they can understand. So, don't know that I really want to start off by just saying a bunch of stuff, but that's my thought process on why I wanted us to do this.
Okay. So, we are...
I feel like this is all me.
Well, we're all free to chime in here too, and you know...
Okay. In my mind, I thought we would have like a round table, and this is pre-interview. I just assumed we would do like a table with all of us and each say how we scored people and where we saw strengths and weaknesses, and apparently we're not doing that. And do we want to? I mean, does no one want to do this?
We can. I think that's, I think that's what your suggestion was.
It was, but I mean, I'm one of a group, so if that's not something everyone wants, but I'm sure everyone watching wants to know why we're about to do what we're going to do.
So, we can go around the table here. Before we get going on that, I think Ms. Holly had, Ms. Holly had had something she wanted to say too.
I'll help you.
Thank you. If I had known I had to do this, I would be more prepared.
Well, it's okay.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Oh, but you did.
So I wasn't really prepared to do what you were talking about, but I'm fine with doing that, if you would like to.
No, we don't have to.
I'm totally fine with that, if everybody wants to do that. It's, you know, I'm good with whatever. But more along the lines of what I was, my thoughts were, really is not so much about the candidates, but about the process that we followed for hiring and interviewing the entire application process. My concerns are that TSBA, when we contracted with them and paid them, I think $16,500 to help us in our search, we were promised that we would get three to four candidates. We had seventeen applicants. I think one of those ended up withdrawing, eventually two, but one at the time, and we were given two. We were not given three to four initially. And then, in all reality, we were given one. And this is a big concern of mine, because giving us one candidate, because let me just say, for those of you who don't know, one of the two candidates we were given was set up with an interview for Director of Schools for Ray County, which was her hometown. And she was selected. So essentially, we were given one, and giving us one is giving us no choice. That's not a choice. So, that's my, one of my issues with the process that we've taken, is that we were only given one applicant, one choice. That is no choice. That's giving us one person. So if we were to try and go into contract with someone TSBA recommended, we don't have but one person. So that's one of my concerns. I don't know how it happened like that. I don't know why we were only given one. I don't think it was explained, really, out of sixteen people. So that's, that's one issue I have with the process. The other issue I have is that there was really no window of time or a buffer between the interviews that we did last week and around for second interviews. And I just feel like that in a position of this caliber that affects this entire community, not just parents of children in the system, in some way, every member of this community is a stakeholder in this. And I feel like that a second round of interviews would have been extremely appropriate. And in that second round of interviews, I would have liked to have seen no questions provided to the candidates in advance. That way, no answers can be rehearsed, they can't be scripted, and candidates are just answering cold, and it would give us a better idea of how they would respond under pressure and problem-solving techniques on a whim, basically. So, anyway, I guess I was, you know, contemplating two options, and I don't know if anybody in here is interested in doing either. And if not, if we do have an interest in doing either of these, I'll be happy to make a motion. I won't waste everybody's time if there's no interest, so. But the two options that, do you want to go ahead?
Oh, there's a work session, so we can't make motions.
I know. I'm talking about at the meeting later on at five. Yeah. So instead of taking everybody's time at the meeting, I'm happy to just discuss it here, and if there's no interest in opening up the application pool again or doing a second round of interviews, I won't take up anybody's time at the meeting. So I want the meeting to move quickly if we can, so. But anyway, the two things that I considered possibly asking for would be to open the application process back up again. I know there was a resume sent out after the application window opened. It was from a person who wanted to apply but didn't, out of respect for the candidate that actually withdrew and went to Ray County, because that person was a coworker with her and did not want to step on her toes. So, but that person is highly qualified if we wanted to consider him. So opening the application process up would allow us to take a look at him, who is as a long list of credentials, very, very impressive, and I appreciate him. His interest was really piqued, but he did not want to step on that other candidate's toes who withdrew. The other thing I would like to possibly put on the table is the second round of interviews where questions are not provided. I just feel like it would allow us to do a more thorough, not really investigation, but for lack of a better term, just, I just feel like it makes the process more thorough, more transparent, and it would allow us to make a decision with a higher level of confidence with that second round of interviews. And that's really all that I have, so.
Mr. Kuhn.
Well, I have to agree with Matthews on a lot of what she's saying, but you know, due to time and everything, I understand, you know, a lot of people may be against the opening it back up, but I think at the very minimum, we ought to have a second round of interviews. It can be short, but you know, thing is, no large company's going to go out and hire somebody to run their company by one round of interviews and they already have the questions to answer. I mean, I personally, myself, I think that's a crazy way to do things, you know, maybe have one round like that, but you know, you cannot get a feel for the actual candidate by doing that. You know, you got to, you know, they're going to have to shoot from the hip, so to speak, in order to get a good feel for if they're capable of handling the stress, you know, whatever may be thrown at them during the interview process. That's all I've got to say on it.
Okay. Mr. Cordell, have any comments on this?
Yes and no.
Okay.
We've all lost sleep over this. We wrestle with it and talk with people, and we want to do what's best for our system, for our kids, for our county. And I can understand Holly's concern about a second round of interviews. I don't, you know, I'm really concerned about with the schedule we've got, the timetable we're up against and whatever, and what that may do down the road to the system. But it makes a, I can see the point of having some questions in an interview with no questions provided beforehand, so we can just see what's on people's mind and let them give a response that quickly. It's tough, tough, tough. It's one of the toughest challenges we've had, and, but we want to do the right thing, whatever that is. And we've been praying for wisdom and discernment in trying to reach out and do what is best for our system, for our team, for our county, for students, and teachers, and whole staff, and whatever. So, you know, I'm open to more discussion on that, but anyway, and the candidate that, the other candidate that Ms. Holly mentioned, I talked with that person's spouse last Friday or Saturday, whenever it was, and she said he would be, he's okay with staying where he is or whatever, but he is very capable, very capable. And I kind of regret, I think we all do, the way it worked out with only having two candidates provided in advance. I certainly thought we would get three or maybe even four, so we could review and consider and whatever. So I felt like our hands were almost tied a little bit with just, and I understand the one dropping out and the one, and all that stuff, but it made it tougher on us. But we want to get the right candidate for the county. So with that, I'll shut up.
Mr. Smith.
Let me start off by saying I'll be glad when this is over. We had three candidates. We made the choice to interview within our county. We had two very qualified people come forward from within our county. We had one from Tallahoma who was just really within our county. So I feel like already we've had three qualified candidates, and we're not going to find much of anything better out there than what we've already interviewed. So as far as interviewing more, no, I have no interest in interviewing anymore. I'm satisfied with three that we have interviewed already. As far as the second round, if the other board members feel like they need that, I don't have a problem with it. I always made sure I sat across from them at supper, and I interviewed them the whole way through supper. So I felt like I had that second round of interviews. That was a good chance to get to know the candidates, to know what was on their hearts, to know how they felt about certain things. I'm not going to shut the door if, if some of the board members feel like they need the second round of questions. But as far as, as opening it up again, that's not, I think we have put our system through eight months of this, and I think it's time it comes to an end. So that's my opinion on that.
Mr. Hensher.
I would say that I, you know, I'm happy with what we've had. I mean, we, we actually had four as well. We, we can't help that, that one dropped out. That wasn't TSB's fault. In my, in my mind, it may be in somebody else's. They couldn't, when they brought us the two candidates that they had, they had no earthly idea what her decision was going to be. So, I mean, in my mind, we had four great candidates, you know, and we was prepared to interview her. She made a decision to go to Ray County. That's her decision, and where her family's at, and I don't blame her. But for myself, I would be fine with what we've got and in the process that we're in as well, but I would be glad to, to do what the rest of the board voted to do. But as for myself, I'm okay with, with the procedure that we're going through and...
Ms. Jones, you want to jump in?
What are we doing?
We're kind of talking about the process, and Ms. Holly brought up whether we wanted to interview some other people or do some additional interview rounds. She brought up a couple of points there, so, so that's kind of, let's see if you have any thoughts on that. If not, we can, I got a couple of things I wanted to point out too, so.
Well, I have never, I haven't had any interaction with any of these candidates outside of our interviews and eating a meal with them, and I think I can make my decision tonight.
All right.
Tom, can I say a couple of things now that I'm not so put on the spot?
You're going back on the spot.
Yes, that's okay. I'm okay once I warm up to it.
It's hard going first.
It is, especially when I wasn't, my thought process wasn't there, but... So, I do like our candidates. Like I'm, I'm pleased with our candidates. I don't want them to feel insulted in any way by any of this discussion that is happening at this moment. I think we're a little unhappy with TSBA's process, because we spent a lot of money for this, and Mr. Shores, we jump all over you when there's only one bid for something, because we want to see more than one bid, and to me, this is no different than that. So it's not that we're not happy with our candidates. We're, me, I should say me, I am not happy with the money spent, because I was expecting it to be a little different. That being said, I, I know Dr. Crabtree, and I know Dr. Cornelius, and I do not know Mr. Hargrove. I've listened to him speak for an hour, and that's it. I have tried very, very hard to be unbiased, but it's hard to lean towards someone I've never spoken with. So I understand the next round of interviews being helpful for myself anyways. The more I can speak with someone and understand where they're coming from, the better. I've scored all my interviews, but aside from my interviews, all I know is my personal thoughts on things, and that's not based on anything for one of our candidates, and I don't think that's fair to him, really.
I just wanted to make some points and clarifications here. One, I personally think it would be, we've had three candidates here that have gone through the process, that we published, and we publicized the timeframe, the hiring process. They went through it, they took the time to do it, they did it right, and I think we got three good candidates. It would be an absolute disservice to these people to say that, that they're not good enough, and we want to go out and start looking at, at other people.
That's not what we're saying.
Nobody ever, I don't think any of us think that.
Well, I think that's the message you sent.
I don't think so. I mean, anytime I've been called in for a second interview, for a job I was applying for, I was thrilled to go for a second interview.
I'm not talking about the second interview. I'm talking about bringing other people in and that type of thing is, I think you kind of, and two, is considering the dust-up we had last week at the middle school with the hiring process and, and, you know, talking about policy and things like that, we have actually published and followed a procedure and a timeline that was put out there to the public, and that, we would probably be a little hypocritical if we held the middle school to the hiring process and we kind of violate our own hiring process here, so that's kind of my opinion on that. Also, on the second interviews, we did propose last Friday, because we had Dr. Lonas's spot open, to bring in the three candidates for, you know, thirty minutes each to interview, and got a very, there was two people that, that were interested in that, and so we got a very lukewarm response to that, so we just kind of canceled that, because we didn't, you know, get a, get a good response on that. So, so those are just some, some clarifications. I think with our timeline, and there's a number of other factors out there, that really trying to open the process up again would be challenging. And I know there's some board members that are going to be out of town, and that's going to make it, that have been putting off trips and that, that type of thing, that's going to make it difficult too, so, so that's just some, some points of clarification here, so.
My concern is, it feels like we are, I feel rushed personally, and this is maybe the biggest decision I've ever made that's not a personal decision. This affects every single person in this county, and I care so much about these teachers and these students. I don't want to just pick somebody. I want to make sure. And to me, I just feel like I'm running along behind all of you. Like I'm not, I'm just not ready.
Other comments?
I just...
Wouldn't I say, excuse me, we have three good candidates, and I'm so thankful for them, and they took the time and had the interest, and all the work and preparation they've done. I'm so thankful for the hard work and, and what they bring to the table.
I agree with that.
Yes, very much.
I just feel like we have possibly missed a very crucial step in the process by not having a second round. It's like Ms. Hodge said, there was one candidate that we didn't know anything about, that we listened to for an hour, and to be honest, I mean, we provided the interview questions, that's an open book test, and it's not any of their fault if they read their answers, because I think any of us would do that if we had an opportunity to, but you're going to get a completely different feel for how that candidate would handle things under pressure when they are asked questions without knowing what they are in advance. And I just feel like it's a crucial step that we're missing, but I'm one of nine. I always say that, so.
I took it from you earlier.
Did you?
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments?
Tom, I guess my question is, we were talking about timeline and what timeline we're on, and would a second round of interviews really, I know we, you feel like opening the process back up would be, put us in a time crunch with our timeline, with when Dr. Powell is serving for us, but what about that second round of interviews? Is that, we have Dr. Powell till the end of July, is that correct?
June.
End of June, okay. That was a month off then. So, do we have, do we have time for that, I guess is my question. We are, the end of April. Come on.
We're the end of April. You, according to our timeline, we are supposed to have a contract out next week, and then bring somebody on by June 1st.
Now, is that the timeline provided by TSBA?
Yeah.
But, but we're not bound to, to abide by that. That's just a suggested, right?
Right. We agreed to that, you know, that's kind of the, what we've been operating on, so, so.
But I mean, they said any part of the, when we contracted with them, any part of the process could be modified. It's our search. It's, you know, and so if we wanted to put it off a week, I don't see how that would really affect things personally, I don't see, but everybody else can say how they feel. I mean, on this, with the decision of this magnitude...
Personally, I like the idea of bringing all three of them in for one night, you know, a quick question and answer session, and that would constitute our second round of interviews. I don't feel like that we need to have full-blown interview like we had before, you know, one candidate each night, but I think that would be, I think that would give everybody a good indication of how they perform under pressure. And needless to say, the job that they're applying for is full of pressure.
And they might want to do this. You know, if it gives them a chance to be seen and to put themselves out there again, I mean, it might change minds all across the board. It might change their own minds if they don't want to anymore. You don't know. Like, I always think it's good to really take a step back and a deep breath and make sure that you're not rushing.
I agree.
Who else?
That's great.
How do you feel about a second round of interviews? I, you know, like I say, we, I got a lukewarm reception from everybody last week. I know there was two that, that were interested, but that, but most people were not, so, so we did not do it, so, so I don't know. Just waiting to see what, what y'all say here. Is there any general consensus? I know we can't vote on it now, but any interest in doing that? It would have to be probably next week. I know you're going to be gone.
I won't be gone until the sixteenth of May.
Okay, oh, okay. I thought you were going to be on on the fourth, so. So, we could do that. I, you know, I guess my feeling is, you know, I think we got three good candidates, and I have gone through, I've looked at all the information, been back through their resumes and their applications, read all the emails, got all the phone calls, all the text messages and the personal communications, you know, watched the interviews again, done some digging on my own, and I feel pretty, pretty satisfied, you know. I have gone through a lot of hiring processes before though, so, so I guess that's, that's something, but, you know, I feel pretty confident in, in how I'm, I would vote, but, but others may not, so.
I tend to lean towards, what do we say about our TCAP students? They might be completely proficient in English, but they might bomb that TCAP because it's a test. An interview's a test. This is not necessarily exactly what this person would be like in an outside conversation or a more casual interview, or in a really deep situation, or anything else. And that's all that we know about them. And I just, I go back to our kids testing and how it doesn't necessarily speak to their strengths and weaknesses. And maybe that's silly, but I have a lot of kids, and I spend a lot of time doing kid stuff, so, that's how my brain works.
So what, what were you suggesting there?
I think another round of interviews, another situation, maybe just, not even interviews, just a different type of, I don't know exactly, but a different type of situation to put these people in, so we can get to know them, and I hate to do something based on one interview in a dinner.
Another opportunity to interact with the three candidates.
I want them all to shine in their own way, and I don't necessarily think that an interview, when you already have all your questions, is the shiniest moment. I mean, you can answer those questions very well, but I like to see people on their toes, really. Tell me what you think in this moment. Like I bombed earlier when Tom made me start the meeting, so, you know?
No, you didn't bomb. Work session is more informative.
See, I would have filmed my interview.
This time. So, well, I'm hearing basically three people that want to do additional interviews. You know, Mr. Gilly obviously is not here, but I, you know, we can, you know, try a motion and see what, what people want to do, and then if that fails, then we can go and vote on the candidate if we want to in the, in the meeting. If that's acceptable to people or just not want to consider it, so. I'm one of nine too, so, so I'm...
I didn't know if we can vote in a work session.
We can.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, so we can do it that way or, or not. I mean, I'm, I'm fine either way. I, you know, you never know how a motion's gonna go, so I quit predicting a while back, I guess. So we can do it that way if, if you folks want, 'cause I'm hearing three strong voices that would like to do that. So, so we can vote on that and then if that fails, then we can move on and vote on the candidate. And, um, in that regard, unless anybody else has anything to say on this topic, we can talk about the actual candidate vote too. So there's really a couple of ways to do that. We can do the, the motion like we normally do and then everybody does a verbal vote. Or we have the option, under Robert's Rules of Order, to have everybody do a written ballot. It would have your name on it and then it would be read off by, by Melissa, um, and that's one way to do it too. So, um, we would need a motion to, to do that, of course, to, to vote, to vote that way. Nothing is, is secret, so your name is still on it either way. So it's just, um, it's just kind of a one-shot where, where you make a motion to vote that way, you vote, and then we read it off and whoever gets at least five then is the new So I'm fine either way, but we, we did talk about that as, as an option, so...
So is, is that gonna be, somebody not, uh, makes a motion by nominating one candidate?
That's, that's the way we traditionally do it, is somebody would make, make a motion, nominate a candidate, or we can make a motion to vote by paper ballot and then everybody would just vote, their name would be on the ballot, and they'd vote for one of the candidates and then the ballots would be, the name would be read off and the, and who they voted for would be done by Melissa, so...
Okay.
So, those are, those are really our options, I think, Dr. Powell, right? So...
Yes, sir. If you, if you went that route, uh, Mr. Chairman, the ballots that you have, when Melissa called them out, she would call out who voted and who they voted for. So it's not a secret ballot situation.
Right. It's a public vote either way.
Yes, sir.
It's just a little bit different way of doing it.
But, but your name would be on the, on the ballot, so to speak, and your candidate's name would be on the ballot.
So, anybody have any thoughts on how they'd like to do that?
Um, Tom, I actually like that idea because that will save us the possible bringing up one and then the hours it could take to come to an agreement. I mean, one way or the other, we will either see if we have a quorum or not pretty quickly that way.
Right, right.
I think it'll save us a lot of time.
Okay.
Mr. Baller, I might say also, the names will be put in the gray basket up here and they will be randomly drawn out. They will not be in any order, as you said up here now. Y'all usually have a, a vote where you kind of go down the line, unless you want to do differently, but the process would be to put them in the basket up here.
So we just walk up and throw them in the basket?
They'd be drawn out in whatever order they come out, so...
Okay.
You may be the first person to vote or you may be the last person to vote.
Okay.
If that's agreeable.
So we write down our ballot and then we walk down there and throw it in the basket?
I'll pick the ballots up, put them in the box, Melissa will take them out and read them out.
All right.
If that's what you want to do.
I've got, uh, one person who's interested in doing it that way. Anybody else?
I'm interested in doing it that way.
Make three.
All right. Anybody else?
Four.
Paper, okay.
It doesn't matter to me, y'all vote either way.
Is there, like, is there, uh, an advantage that I'm, that I'm missing to...
No, it's, it's, it's just, well, what, what Beth is saying is, is that potentially, you know, somebody votes, somebody nominates somebody, they make a motion...
Yeah.
And it doesn't pass and then you guys gotta do it, make another motion.
And then make another motion.
Right. Yeah.
Make a third motion and...
Where you, yeah.
I'm interested in that.
Making an hour's worth of motions, yeah, so... So this way, if somebody gets five, now, you know, we're supposed to strive to be unanimous, but, uh, but this way, you know, it would probably be one round. So you get five and then that person would then be our director candidate, so...
There could be more than one round of ballots.
Right.
Understand that, okay?
Right. Yeah, if you don't get five, then, then we'd have to vote again, so, all right.
But is this, is this done very often? I've never...
I'm sorry.
As long as I've been on the school board, I've never, of course, we only did one director and we did it the traditional way. And, uh, is this done a lot? I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but I, I didn't know there was another way of doing it.
I don't know that it's done very often. I'm sorry, Freddie K, I can't see you behind that monitor.
Oh, okay.
Um, it's, it's, I haven't been in a whole lot of these, to be honest with you, so I don't know, but it's a form, it's a, a formation that has been done, that is recommended by TSBA as a process that you can use.
Okay.
But as far as saying I've seen it happen, no, I haven't. When I interviewed for the city system, they told me to be at the central office at a certain time. When I got there, there were five board members and about twenty people in the audience. There were three of us that were involved in that interview. One person withdrew prior to the interviews. The other two, myself and the other person, sat there and took questions from the board, uh, with no upfront, knowing what was gonna be asked, I guess. They knew what they were, but we didn't have any, didn't have any idea what was gonna be asked. And then the board voted. But, yeah, I haven't seen it done like this, but it is an acceptable method from, and it's not a, not a secret ballot type situation.
And it, and it is, uh, it conforms to Robert's Rules of Order too. I, I believe, Mr. Shores, but...
I would assume so, because, because it's all open.
I have checked, yeah.
It, it should be all open, so it should be fine. The, the biggest thing that it's gonna do is keep from pressure from one person bringing up a name and somebody else thinking, well, I'm, I have to, I need to vote that way or something.
Right.
It's gonna take away that and, and like you said, it's, rather than just one person being nominated, you have the open of, uh, voting for the person that you wish to vote for.
All right.
It would keep whoever the first person, if you use your regular routine, it would keep that person, the first person to vote, that could sway another vote somewhere down the line. And that's what I say, that's an option you have. If you want to leave it that way, that's perfectly all right, but this other way can also be done.
Well, I guess what I'm hearing is that the paper ballot is, seems to be what the majority of the folks want to do, so let's, so we would probably need a motion to do that and then we'll just go ahead and vote that way if, if we get to that point. All right. Well, if that, that is, uh, anything else? Any final words?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Sure.
I'd like to say, um, you know, I can't say on behalf of everybody, but, uh, we really, uh, thought it was a great response from the community in the emails that we got toward the director, um, you know, hiring a new director. And, um, I really appreciate everyone's input, um, and I'm glad to say the community get involved. It's always helpful to know what the pulse of the community is. That's it.
I agree.
I agree too.
A lot of them. And I like your talk, you know, I mean, it's...
But that shows they care.
Yeah.
And that's so important.
I agree and I'm so thankful for our community getting involved. It's critically, critically important. So I want to thank those that took the time to research and, and comment on that.
We got a lot and we got some for each candidate, a lot for each candidate. And they were all so nice to read and so full of praise and it did me good to see people speaking out for what they believed. We should all do so.
Good information. All right. Well, with that, let's take a, about a fifteen-minute break and, and then, uh, we'll come back at five and do our special call meeting and, uh, go from there.